Hello, everybody. It is April 24th, 2025, and I am calling the Bastrop City Council portion of the Joint Workshop of the Bastrop City Council, the Planning and Zoning Commission, to order at 6:00 PM.
And I, Jordan Scott, would like to call the Planning and Zoning portion to order at 6:00 as well.
Okay, so we're going to start with item number two, citizens' comments. I do have one citizen's comment card. Madam City Secretary, do we have any others? Okay, so our citizen comment is from Pablo Serna.
All right, thank you. I didn't know we were going to do the pledge allegiance and all that, but real quick, I wanted to, first of all, thank all of y'all for coming and getting this going, especially the city staff for pushing this. I know we're making a lot of changes right now. We all understand what's happening. Development is coming, and we're trying to do the best here. And so this is really encouraging to see, and great to see the public out here also giving their input. One of the things I want to talk about, there's a bunch of things, but the one thing I wanted to zero in on is if we could increase the size of our historic district. Right now, as you know, it's only two streets. It's Main Street, North and South, and it's only those blocks around it. So I would hope that we get serious about really trying to protect our historic neighborhoods, because those are outside of that district, and we could expand that to the Iredel District. And it doesn't mean that every house there is going to be, have a lot of limitations on it, but it would mean that we would have some say in it. And I think that would also empower the Historical Landmark Commission to at least have a say in something, whether it's demolitions or whether it's new development. And so I think that one of the things that can happen, that I've seen happen in other towns, is the first houses to go are the ones that are not in the best shape. If you're familiar with the old casino that's right there on Lafayette and Farm Street, it fell in, and it's unfortunate because that's on all the old maps. It's very historic. It was a really nice historic resource that we lost it, essentially. So it's down there. Now, we're not going to be able to get that back, and so it's unfortunate. But that kind of thing is going to happen faster and faster. So I would hope that as city leaders, you start to get serious about getting historic districts expanded and look at also pairing up with the Texas Historical Commission on the certified local government. As you know, I work with the Texas Historical Commission, and I could certainly put you in touch with that person. And I think those would be good things to do. I was actually at a conference earlier today, and the City of Elgin has done some really good work on their tax incentives, and there's a number of projects. So even contacting the City of Elgin on how they're implementing those tax credits for new development, for redevelopment of their downtown. I would love to see that happen for Bastrop as well. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to work sessions and briefings, starting with item 3A, workshop to discuss the amendments to Chapter 2 and Chapter 5 of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan developed by Haff and Associates. Mr. Cowley.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out. As the mayor stated, this is a workshop to discuss the Chapter 2 and 5. Iredel will come up here and meet with Haff and Associates to give a presentation, including kind of timeline. There's been approximately nine-plus months involved with this process. A lot of public engagement, a lot of public meetings. Part of this process, sometimes we don't take time to recognize staff, but Coy, Nicole, Alondra, Victoria, Viviana, and thanks for their severe support and patience with staff. There's a lot of times been in this. P&amp;Z has been very supportive. Council's been very supportive, so we appreciate that. And we appreciate all the citizens' support and come out to make this future land use map for the city. So Iredel, again, is with Haff and Associates. She's going to do the presentation, and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
I'm going to start the presentation from this area over here, but I just wanted to say thank you again all for coming together and really working on putting your comments and feedback. What we're trying to accomplish today is really to show you, based on all the information that we've received, both from the public and from stakeholder meetings and previous meetings that we've had with you, where things landed in terms of adjusting for that future land use map and the different strategies and goals that reflect more of the community's values. I apologize that I need to sit for this. So want to just give you a quick overview of the process. I mean, you all have seen this and are familiar with this, but just for the general public also, project overview. So the purpose of this update was really to look at the future land use map, to look at the growth chapter in the comprehensive plan, as well as the land use and community image chapter, which is noted as Chapter 5, and really look at the goals that are in those plans and see whether or not they reflect the city and the residents' values here in Bastrop. So general scope of this project really included looking at the existing conditions and the land uses. A component of community engagement and those outreach efforts are listed there on the right. Taking and aggregating a lot of that information and providing an analysis that creates that future land use map and that growth potential map that we're also going to... A little closer. Sure. That we're also going to walk through today. And then the update to the draft plan and recommendations associated with that. So today, you have a copy of that draft plan, and it will and can be revised, and we'll have some minor revisions that we'll include before that becomes the final document that goes to City Council. So here is just that timeline. So as Doc mentioned, we've been on a nine-month timeline, started back in August of 2024. And as you can see, you know, we've had a number of different engagement opportunities or presentations to planning, zoning, and to the City Council to gather some of that feedback. And today is one of those where we included an earlier open house, as well as today's conversation with this joint group today. And then hopefully in May, we'll have an opportunity to present the final updates for these chapters and garner that approval from City Council. So I wanted to just point out a couple of the really important components to the update. So we wanted to make sure that we updated some of the demographic and regulatory changes. So as you know, you had your B-3 code that was adopted after the previous plan. So really trying to get the future land use map and the growth components and the population indicators there aligned with the vision of the community. And then taking that and aligning that future land use map with the city's particular vision and its particular unique identity. And then combining some of the flexibility that we've seen, both in your existing code with some of the preferences for some of the more, what I would call more of the traditional zoning that have better definitions for certain components of future land use. And then, of course, making sure that there is a strong connection to that identity that's Bastrop and that all, the future land use map provides some better intention for where those land uses are. Okay, so getting into the update here. So a couple of things I wanted to highlight from the community input that we heard, and this includes the stakeholder meetings. This includes the feedback that we received from the survey, as well as comments that came from this group and some of the other meetings that we've had. So we continuously heard that there is a real desire to have more parks and open space. I think folks really reflected on the development that's happened over the last 10 years and really have said, you know, I want to see more trees. I want to see more park space. I want to continue to see that rural, green land here in Bastrop. We also heard that people really want to see that new development really focused on the west side of the city, so west of the river, really preserving and conserving and protecting that portion that's east of the river. In terms of residential areas, folks really still support that rural residential or that residential component here. There were sort of a mixed feelings about how to better service residential neighborhood areas. Really, a lot of the things that we heard was that there was just a lot of concentration of retail development, but some of that needs to be dispersed to service some of those other neighborhoods. So in other words, you know, building community neighborhood areas without that supportive day-to-day services for retail or professional services or other things like that. And then there was also just some general concerns about diversity and density and sort of understanding how to find the right mix of that for Bastrop. In terms of commercial in downtown, really the focus was making sure that there needs to be more of that retail commercial that isn't just along 71, that there is some of that that's provided in more of these neighborhood nodes along some of the other highway areas in Bastrop. And then, as it relates to more professional services in downtown, expanding those professional services, so really talking about that distribution of retail opportunities or commercial opportunities, but also protecting that downtown component or that old-town area. In addition to the survey information that we collected and some of the information from the public meetings, we held some stakeholder meetings as well, and some of you were participants of that. And I won't go through all of these, but essentially, a lot of the same themes kind of came through at those meetings as well. And really just talking about sort of complete communities, making sure that there's a balance of that, really making sure that the identity of Bastrop remains even in new development, not just in the downtown area as well. And then, of course, the protection of those natural resources or water resources and other things that are very important to your residents here. So one of the elements that we go through in the update is to really identify what some of the regional trends are or the growth factors that are influencing the growth trend and patterns that are happening in Bastrop. And so a lot of this information is pretty familiar to you, but, you know, being sort of a recipient of a lot of the growth that's happening in the Austin area, you are seeing a lot of that expansion coming here to Bastrop. So, you know, those businesses are building outside of the Bastrop footprint, and they're recognizing, or the development community or residential communities recognizing that Bastrop is a really great place to, you know, have that residential opportunity. And so you're seeing some of that happen, that East Ridge expansion. Obviously, the opportunity for the tech corridor, really continuing that along some of those areas of Bastrop, both in the northwest area or north of town, in addition to that east, that activity that's happening to the east. So as a result of that, you know, that housing search has really influenced a lot of the land use here in Bastrop. There's information that provides that there's been a significant increase over the last 10 years for that. And then finally, really understanding how Bastrop can manage that growth. And so over the last 10 years, or even in the last five years, you know, there's been a lot of restrictions about how cities can manage that growth, but there are still some tools that the city can use to help shape that future development through your future land use map, special service districts, or public improvement districts in MUDs, and other things that can really help to direct the type of growth that you want to see here in Bastrop. And then the figure that I have here that shows the population growth, so this particular figure really just indicates that you all have already exceeded this 2025 prediction that came out of your water demand. So right now, I think your population's at about 14, 7, and the projection for the water demand plan that was done had a projection of 11,000 or just shy of 12,000. And so clearly, you all are already surpassing that, that population growth. Couple other observations related to growth and land use. So we were able to look at the percentage within just the city limit of the type of land use that currently exists between 2016 and 2024. And so you can see that there are significant jumps in that single-family residential. You can also see that there is some, just a slight jump in that retail commercial from 7.2% to 9.9%, almost 10%. And then you can see where that drop happens in that agricultural and rural component. It was about 30% and today, that land is really at about 11%. And so some of the other areas, and we heard this, I mean, this tracks with what we heard from the public, that, you know, that retail and commercial isn't, that proportion of growth isn't happening relative to that single family, or that parks and open space is also not quite proportional to that. Hasn't decreased, but it certainly isn't proportional to that. And so there's a desire to maybe have that a little bit more balanced. So the map that we are seeing up on the screen right now, this is the existing land use here in Bastrop. So this is just looking at the county data for the property data and these general categories of commercial, family, agricultural, vacant land. And so this is just sort of how things are today in Bastrop. And, you know, this probably looks very familiar to you. This is what your community currently looks like right now. And then, of course, you are familiar with this map, too. This is your zoning place type map. This is essentially, you know, how in your code you decide where and what types of developments or land uses can be zoned for this community. One of the other things that we looked at in terms of future land use are are there other constraints besides growth and population that we need to consider? And so we did a hazards, high-level hazards analysis to really understand those flood-prone areas in Bastrop, the wildfire risk, you know, with the intensified heat that we've seen, really to identify whether or not some of those areas are going to have either concern or have opportunities to prevent or to better prepare for those types of hazards in the future. Okay, so what you're looking at here is what we're calling the growth potential map. And essentially, this map is really to help inform the future land use map. So this map was an exercise that we did where we looked at different components or criteria that would identify areas that would be considered high-growth potential, just areas that provide more opportunities for growth versus areas that wouldn't necessarily have a low-growth potential, but they have more of a restrictive growth opportunity. And so as you can see, the criteria that's provided under the high-growth potential is really things that include utility services, major thoroughfare access, the type of property that was there, and then if there were 10 acres or greater in terms of being able to be developed. And then for the low-growth potential, what we included in that are items like environmentally constrained land, some of those risk hazards that we looked at, and then if there was existing development, so in particular in that downtown area, that old-town area. And so as the stronger green or the brighter green comes through is where there is that higher potential or opportunity for growth, and then where it fades to a lighter green, white, and then pink to red is where there is that lower opportunity for growth or at least more restrictive or potential hurdles that you might have to go through in order to develop in that area. So I want to pause here and give you guys an opportunity to either ask questions or make some comments about this growth potential map. Or you can save them for me.
We're good? Cool.
This area right here?
Can you maybe repeat the question or find some way to, so we can get it on this broadcast?
What, the pink area up here is Piney Ridge at the top? Yeah? Piney Ridge area? And then in the downtown area, where is that primarily concentrated?
Yeah, it looks like water, doesn't it?
Yeah, it looks like around water to... Yeah, the tracks, I guess, and then north and south from maybe Walnut to kind of wiggling around almost to the tracks.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that a meal? No, it's just sediment.
And I know in this area, there, I think there were some concerns about flooding through the risk hazard. So that area really, really caused some, you know, what we would call some less opportunities for growth, or there would need to be a larger investment in some sort of infrastructure in order to be able to potentially infill that area.
Yeah, the pink that she's on now, that could be Gil's Ranch stuff, I guess.
Okay, whoops. Well, if you have other questions, though, we can always come back to this map, but I'll keep moving it along here. So just a couple of insights that we provided in the update are really looking, as we look at this, sort of what this map tells us is that, you know, there's this conversation between infill and sprawl. And sprawl is such a strong word because Bastrop is not a very large geographic community, but, you know, that leapfrog development that can happen in a community versus concentrating all of your development in sort of where the existing infrastructure is. And so our takeaway is that while there is some opportunity here, low opportunity for growth here, it really makes more sense to concentrate that future effort on these western edges or this, you know, as we move towards the west here, and really focusing that growth within those high-potential areas that are identified in that dark or green. Investment in terms of infrastructure priorities, again, you know, there's still, I think, some sensibility in focusing in future investments in areas where you have the wastewater, electrical services, major thoroughfares, opportunities for, you know, all of these components, really still targeting that as areas where you can guide some of that new development that's happening. So when we take that growth potential map, so that map is not a regulatory map. It's really an exercise to help inform us about how we could look at the land use categories in the future land use map to say, this would be commercial. This might be a mix of commercial and residential. This might be more park space. This might be habitat-sensitive area. And so this map has really helped us to inform that future land use map that we're going to look at by being able to balance some of the growth land use considerations moving forward, you know. And remember, your future land use map is a map that is at a very high level, and it is meant to guide growth over the next 10 to 20 years. The other component that we think we were able to sort of identify here is that in some of these darker-green areas, I believe there are some already planned development districts. And so really continuing to utilize those specific tools to help develop the type of land use and product that you want to see in Bastrop along those higher-potential growth areas. And then while we didn't specifically look at transportation, because those aren't tackled under these chapters, there was a lot of conversation about it regardless. You know, there's a lot of conversation from stakeholders and from the survey. And so it's still really important to make sure that that is considered in your future land use map. So making sure that not only do you have the new development that's coming in, but it's in a place that is going to have access to transportation. It's going to be well-located and not going to increase traffic and congestion for the community. Okay, so some of the high-level recommendations or really the objectives and strategies under the goals really sort of fall into these buckets, which are preserving Bastrop's unique identity, aligning growth with those community goals, and directing development to strategic locations, and then making sure that the community is enhanced for, enhance readiness for the growth in those areas. So focusing on investing infrastructure in some of those already-existing zoned lands that can support the quality development, continuing to update your zoning code right now, and utilizing some of those tools that I highlighted before to really explore how, the types of different development that you may or may not want here in Bastrop. Okay, to the meat of it, right? Okay, so there's also a poster here in the room, if you needed to see that. But this future land use map essentially is showing sort of the revised version of the future land use based on some of the information that we were able to aggregate from the growth potential map, from the comments and feedback from the community. And this is still a working version. And so one of the things that we heard is that there is a desire to disperse some of the commercial and retail. And so that blue area, which is called mixed-use corridor commercial, has been distributed on some of the major, other major highways throughout Bastrop. We also heard that, you know, protecting east of the river, where the Houston toad habitat is, as well as the tree canopy and the pines out there are also really important. So we reserved a good portion of this area over here in that residential conservation easement, which is typically a rural land use grouping. And then I just want to point out that neighborhood residential is really focused on sustaining that single-family-style development, so that one-third acre development of housing in these areas here. The red, you know, is the concentration along 71 of that corridor commercial. So, you know, it's a highway. It's not an area where you're going to see walkability. Portions of it are elevated. It's going to have large parking lots. It's going to be places where you're going to have to drive to things to access that. But buffering it on, as you sort of move into some of these other areas, you see that there's more diversity of the land use type. So residential mixed density, this is not mixed use. This is just a variety of residential product that you would find in this area. Small-scale apartment complexes, smaller, single-family homes that would really buffer between traditional, single-family use in this yellow and that heavy corridor commercial along here. Absolutely. I am, yes. So currently, that definition does not, currently in the definition, it says not appropriate to have commercial. So in your packet, if you look at page, let me get you to the right page, page 63, it has some guidance information here in development, guidance information in development intensity, and some definitions for appropriate land uses. And so we call out residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, parks, and open space. And under commercial, we say not appropriate.
Thank you.
How do I turn this on? Is it possible to change that language and rather than say not appropriate or whatever those words are, to make it definite that it would not be any commercial? Because my concern is the property behind Buc-Ee's. That's been a very hot button in the community, and I'm afraid that if we don't, if we make that clear, that it will not be commercial, then we could have a problem, potential problem.
And the concern for commercial is the multifamily, 200, 300, is commercial, right? Yeah.
Right. So I think if you open that up, then it is commercial.
No, no, not open it up, but we need to be, we need to be very specific in our definition that residential mixed density means single-family duplexes, condominiums. And then when you get to the volumes that she's talking about, the 200-plus units, those are commercial.
Okay.
And this type of land use doesn't really distinguish, is it commercial because it's retail or is it commercial because it's in a park? So I think we need to tweak the definition to be sure that it is going to only include that schema.
So what are you thinking exactly as far as a tweak? Because, like you said, multifamily could mean six units. It could mean 300 units. Should we set an exact number as far as how many units for a building?
Or height, maybe?
Or something?
I'll also point out that none of this is binding.
Right.
Right, so, I mean, in fact, usually these are just put on a shelf and never looked at again.
No, that's not true.
No, yeah, they are. We've looked at them one time in three years.
No, that's not true. We look at them every Thursday.
Okay, well, we don't.
Well, it's important to the tools that we use every single week.
The thing about this, though, is that private landowners are not bound by this. They can build within the constraints of the zoning and the development rules, which are within the control of these two bodies. Anything of their pleasing, and state law says we have to let them as long as it meets those other rules that we've set. So setting something on here, I think the place in my head where this is the most useful is if we're putting in a water line to a new development and based upon the space available and the study that was done to demonstrate what might go next door to it. and the study that was done to demonstrate what might go next door to it, you could then say, well, it seems reasonable that we're going to have a continued retail development all the way down 71, so let's put in a line that's large enough to support that whole thing, rather than say, you know, a 24-inch line that we need definitively for this new development. Let's put in a 40-inch line because the plan here imagines that we're going to see new development out that direction with additional retail, and that makes sense.
Yeah, but what, John, I don't really want to pick this thing apart, that's not my intention.
Yeah.
I just have real concern about that one spot.
No, no, I, I.
And I think that maybe we change it just to residential, you know, make it a residential and not mixed use, just change it to residential. If we change it to residential, then we don't have an issue. And why wouldn't you go ahead and build your water line regardless?
Because it costs additional money. You want to put in as much as you need, but not excess capacity that you'll never use. So that's why the plan is useful.
Stay in my concern.
Right, but so I guess my question is, on that concern, by coloring it to the residential color on this map, that doesn't bind anyone to follow that? And that's the point I was trying to make.
Well, Sylvia, you're saying something different, right?
So here's what happens with that map.
Yeah.
We get a development that, we get a development that comes in who wants to do a 300-unit apartment complex. We go, hmm, number one, the land use is not appropriate. So staff would then say, we would not support a rezoning in that case. However, we can't also deny due process to a zoning case. And so we would say, we're going to write the staff report to planning and zoning that says, we do not recommend approval of a rezoning. So the map has tools. It does have tools with our capital improvement planning, absolutely. But it is what we use every single day when we have an interaction with a developer as to whether something has an appropriate or compatible use. We are more in a use-based zone today, and our code is form, remember that.
I know.
But I'm happy to tweak that definition a little bit if it means we don't end up with what is in the blue. Now, the blue specifically says you have retail on the bottom and residential on the top. But that yellow to orange to red, that's like planning 101, if you're using use-based planning. Single family to apartments to commercial, that's kind of how that.
Yeah, because the intention of the map isn't the code. It's not firm and binding. It is important, though, that we update this and that we're concise, because we want to send a clear message to developers when they're looking at properties. All of these properties in the red most likely aren't zoned commercial, but with an updated map, now if I'm going to be a developer and I want to say, hey, I want to build something in Bastrop, this is something that they're going to be able to look at and say, hey, you know what, this is going to be worth my time to do all of the development stuff, all of the planning to put in the money and the work and making the offer, making the communication, because it's on the map. Now, where Patrice is concerned is just the language in this particular property behind Buc-Ee's, because it says multifamily, but we could get on the fringe of, hey, what does multifamily mean, right? By definition, it could be multi-unit going into that commercial space. So if we could maybe make some clarifications on what multifamily means, but not too concise, because we also have to accommodate for the other zones.
Why don't we just change it to neighborhood residential?
Can we just make, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Nope, I mean, if we do that, it solves the problem.
Can we make the guidance much stronger? This is way too, and look, I'm going to look at what we have going on right now on our existing, and I'm looking at future. And we've got rule, and, because I'm specifically talking about what you're talking about behind Buc-Ee's. And let's do remember, the guidance was to have it more dense, right? Because it was rule and we moved from that. Well, that was a big talking part, right? Because when people buy land, as Jordan's saying, they intend for the future land use map to back them up most of the time. So that's misleading to developers if we don't get it right and defined. However, I want us to look, and I'm not going to take a lot of time on this, but this area that you're bringing up is one of my big circle areas. We have rule now behind there, and we are going to, on the future, let's look at the orange, the future residential mixed density. That doesn't, I mean, I know on the page that you're saying, but we need much stronger guidance on this, because I don't agree. I think we need to keep that, what we have on our existing land use. That's just my opinion.
So Sylvia, why is it being recommended that we have residential mixed use there? What's your thinking about that?
And let me just interject very quickly, so we can make sure that the language is correct. So that is not mixed use in the orange, it is residential, residential mixed density. So it is strictly residential, and, but it is a variety of residential. And in the draft that we've provided for you, we do define what that residential is. We talk about small-scale multifamily, which sounds like we might need to just call out larger, 300-plus, 250-plus, whatever that threshold is for that larger multifamily would be considered commercial and more appropriate in the commercial section. So I just want to make sure we're using the right language to define that orange area, because that is residential, it is not mixed use. Mixed use would include a mixture of uses. Residential mixed density is only one type of use, which is housing.
Well, one of the concerns had to do with traffic. And if we make that, you know, multifamily, we have apartments there, I mean, we're right back into the argument of, we got 1,900 cars that are feeding onto 71 at that traffic light, it's already a disaster. And I don't think that's going to work. I don't think that's going to work for the residents of Bastrop. So I think we really need to consider what we do with that particular piece of property, and maybe we just call it residential.
And let me offer just one last, one last sort of shade to that conversation about traffic. So again, you know, we really didn't look at the transportation component. That's not to say that we're not thinking about it, but as your planning department will tell your city engineer, you have a hierarchy of streets. And so whatever development comes in, they're going to be required to either set aside or do something to make improvements to that street. So other things will impact how the infrastructure around that area would get.
Yeah, I understand that, but we've just, this particular piece of property has caused such an uproar in this city that I think that we really need to think about how we're teeing it up. Because, I mean, one of the conversations we had with the current developer was, go ahead and do a transportation study. They didn't want to do that until we approved the zoning change, because it was going to cost them money. I understand that, but it's just, that particular piece of property is a big issue in this city. So I think we need to think about how we're going to zone it or color it.
So Patrice, the question was, why is it residential? Because we heard you at Gateway, you don't want it to be commercial.
Right, I got that part.
Yeah, so it's residential. Now, I don't know that it matters to any one of the staff, including myself, whether that's a light yellow or a yellow. It really doesn't. If that's a change that the committee and the council want to see, wonderful. That area is going to be prevented by the toad and some other geographical, not to say that engineering and a certain amount of money can't fix it, because we've seen that too. But I don't think there's anybody in the room that's going to die on the cross that wants that to be orange.
Okay, thank you.
I agree, and I think, let's make it light yellow, because that's what the, that's just my input on it.
Well, there's also the issue that there's some P5 right there also, you know, right on the service road.
Right, and that's on the service, but TechStop won't allow access into that from there, that's going to have to be from Pitt Street. But that's been that way, that's what we have now is commercial, and that's what is future. So I get that and I agree with that, Gary.
Yes, there.
I think personally, my only drawback from completely abandoning the mixed residential is that we already have apartments in that location. And it doesn't really, to me, seem like it's an issue of what's there, it's just how many people, right? We could put 100 townhouses, or you could put 100-unit apartment building, you have the same number of cars, same number of people. Does changing that in the future land use to prevent those types of buildings really make a big difference? Do we want people to build residential there, like houses, or, like, I just want to know what the biggest concern is.
I think that's allowed now, right? I mean, the houses are allowed now on the rule, it's allowed.
Yes, but.
Speed 3, I think.
Well, the big concern was, yes, traffic, but two, that's a lost pines conservation area. It was previously named something, and the trees and et cetera, that's some of the super concern there. Now, I would argue that the swath along 71 does need to go red, just because that's already zoned that way.
I don't think that, I don't think those residents would have a problem with that.
Yes, yeah.
Which one, along 71?
It's right along 71, where.
All of that.
It's the two or three lots that are adjacent to 71.
It's all orange right now, but part of that close to 71 should be red.
And Sylvia, I thought we had identified.
Yeah, that is.
We're switching.
Can you speak into the mic?
Speaking into the mic.
She's going, Sylvia's going. Right.
So that piece right there, that should be red.
Correct.
And whether you build, whether you build 1,500 houses on the side of that hill, or you put commercial, retail on the side of that hill, you're going to have a lot of traffic on the side of that hill.
Well, but.
And you're going to.
But at that point, they've got to go do a traffic analysis, and if it won't work, then they got to come up with another idea.
Well, you're going to have to have a traffic analysis no matter what, whether it's residential or commercial. So just saying that you don't want commercial because there's going to be traffic, because there's going to be traffic whether it's residential or commercial. Look at the amount of traffic on, that comes out of Hunter's Crossing, Riverside Grove, or the Colony, that's leaving out onto 969 now, and into that part of town, and it's massive, there's a lot of traffic there, and it's nothing but residential right now. So the stigma with, if you put retail or something else over there that is going to be more traffic, it's going to be traffic no matter what. If that land gets developed, which it will at some point in time, it's going to be traffic whether it's residential or commercial. And the people on the east side of town would like to have a grocery store, too.
Jimmy, I think what people are concerned about is the amount of traffic, because with commercial, you have a lot more, and we're, I'm not arguing that that strip should not, as Gary said, stay commercial, that is already commercial. My concern is the same concern we had with the Gateway project, was going into what we have changed from our current land use map to the future, putting a higher density development. I think because of the experience with Gateway, we need to keep it as the single residential rule, whatever it is right now. I just don't see the huge change there.
Well, my point again is, even if you make it single-family residential, look at the most dense building that we've got with residential right now, which is a D.R. Horton type home, the production homes, and there's massive amounts of homes that can be put on that 35 acres over there. So you're going to have a lot of cars and a lot of parking and a lot of streets.
Yeah, but Jimmy, if you have apartments there, you'll have more people there. You'll have more people there, you'll have more cars there, versus residential. Just, if you can stack people on top of each other, you get more people than if you have regular homes. There's no question there's going to be traffic there, and we're going to have to deal with it in some way. But I think that we need to try to minimize the amount of traffic we have to deal with.
Well, with the changes we've made, isn't it for residential, be one acre, so 35 homes could go in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the way it's set up.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we changed it, so, but like I said, the P, you've got to keep the P5 there, but you go and put 30 homes probably up in there.
Or just neighborhood residential.
Oh, good.
So I have a question. The, so a lot of the issue with the Gateway was saving the pines, so.
Saving the what?
The pine trees.
Oh.
So I was wondering why some of the area behind Buc-Ee's wasn't the lighter shade of yellow to save the pines? Because that was one of the biggest issues as well of the residents, the community in general was saving the pines. So I would be in agreement of changing some of that yellow to a lighter yellow. I forget what the, can you zoom that out so I can see what that top?
So what's red, what's red there on that map is already red. It's the apartments that are classified as commercial, and then some of that is already zoned P5 as commercial.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. That yellow there is the residential conservation. I don't know how much of that is the pines, but saving some of that as the residential conservation, because that was one of the bigger issues. And then my other, my other one was, I thought that when we did the big workshop, we had, a lot of people were saying that the commercial would go up 95, that we would eventually start building commercial up 95 as well. Or are we just concentrating that commercial right there at that intersection, which again adds to the traffic congestion?
No, again, what is in orange is just traditional downstepping zoning, yellow to orange to red, that's just traditional. What I'm saying is, nobody here has any issue if we want to change that to yellow, that's fine. The purple is what has been categorized, which is that part of 95, that's like our downtown core. And so the downtown is still super form-based, that will allow mixed commercial residential.
Up 95, though? That area right there?
Oh, that's outside our, that's in the ETJ. Between the black line and the red line is ETJ.
Got it, got it, got it. So our skating rink is right there at the black line? Okay, so there's not a whole lot. So we're not wanting to build commercial along that corridor of 95 because of the.
No, we can. So there's, so downtown Bastrop is that purple color. And so downtown Bastrop right now has a mixed, you can do commercial, you can do residential. We have several developments.
Oh, got it, got it, got it.
Yeah, yeah.
So we don't really need to, I see.
No, red is your more, red is your more super intense commercial. Yeah, and I would argue that along that segment of 95, it's too dangerous to be that intense.
So since we are on this section now, because that's my second circle, I only have two circles, y'all, so we got, did one, so we got one more. Because the section that's purple now for future is currently single family residence. And the thing is, and I get why we want it to be downtown, because we want that protection, but I think in this case, we need to, and I don't, we spoke about this, having a mixture, like, how do you say that where it's both of them? Like, you want it to be in the downtown overlay, but you also want it to be single fam, what it is today. We want to keep, that's what I'm thinking. We need to make sure we state that, because there's a lot of flooding that goes on in that area, too.
So under the downtown Bastrop definition, and this may not entirely answer your question, but if you look at the description that's provided for downtown, let me pull it up so I get it right. Okay, that's on page 71. That category includes residential in there as well. And one of the things we tried to do is also just highlight where that central business district is in that shaded area. So under the appropriate land uses, you know, we kind of call out what sorts of commercial development would be permitted, and then identifying those residential opportunities as well. And then under that guidance and interpretation, what we tried to do is really call out this context sensitivity, so making sure that if you're putting in commercial development, it doesn't look like sore thumb in that area, right? It sort of matches the character of that area. And that can be done through the code in an overlay district with some guidance parameters for that entire purple area, or however you want to do that. So I don't know that that answers your question entirely, but that's how we tried to address some of that under this category.
Yeah, I was just very concerned, because currently, it's yellow for single family, and I don't see any yellow on single family, I just see downtown. So I think we need to be much, again, much more specific and detailed about our description of what that is.
It includes that, it does include single-family residential in the description.
I know it includes it, I just want to make sure we prevent some things from going on.
Sure.
Was the historic redrawn map, take any consideration for this, you know?
Somewhat. Yes, somewhat. We didn't take it all the way beyond 71 into Primera Iglesia Baptista, just because that corridor, technically and usually, the faster the speed on the highways and stuff, that's your more intense commercial, and that other side of that happens to be more of that. of that. We're probably, here, I, I need to get up to the map again.
Things are changing so rapidly from just even when this map was printed.
Stop doing that.
So, right from here, we've got a townhome development coming in, so that's gonna change that color a little bit. The, the map that you can run about from a historic perspective brings that, um, Bastrop ministry down this way because of, to capture the family that used to live there. That's gonna be their result of a historic marker. I think that you have some segments of seventy-one that are described for commercial development. What we were trying to do is, the areas that are, what I'm gonna say stripped out, because they're already stripped out, the thought of it happening is no more, we begin to allow better land uses, whether it's a mixed use of commercial and residential, where you can get some density numbers, or where we already know things are coming, because they already have predeveloped plans, they already have, you know, predeveloped meetings. The rest of the colors, can't really do anything about that color, because that's, that's got natural protection in it, and then it's gonna be blue. And then really, the only other color we have to work with is the industrial history. So our, our bigger discussion from a staff perspective is, we know about that that is developing out. We know re-ranching is developing out, we already did through those plats, we already approved those things, those are the colors, those are the colors. Now, if they expire, right, then we can do something different. But, um, again, this is a tool that we use, and it's a guided tool for us, it's a guided tool. What happens when somebody submits an application, it doesn't fit, it looks like it's not fit, water, the road, the water, the sewer, the drainage, and it can happen. And the only way I can make the water drainage happen is this, these things will have to approve the plan that says you need to be putting in types of ex-peristites to, um,
Sylvia, the, the neighborhood commercial, um, comments that we received for neighborhood commercial, were those comments directed in any portion of downtown area? Right, so were there, there was a no, did you guys talk about what areas that could possibly occur in for neighborhood commercial and what that looks like? Do we need to identify that, if that's what people are asking for?
Well, in the downtown, it's, it's really coordinated, so you can have a Tracy's in the middle of.
Right.
And it's included in the purple, is that in your definition?
But there's two different, it, it's not identified in the map, I guess is what I'm saying, because I, like in my.
You don't want a specific color for neighborhood commercial?
Well, I mean, I think we should think about where that would go, because we don't, we don't wanna get into another Gateway situation where we're gonna put, and what, what type of neighborhood commercial? Like we have the florist shop over there, we have the, um, on our side of town anyway, we have the florist shop over there, we have Tracy's. What type of neighborhood commercial are we going to allow in that area?
Did we, did we define neighborhood commercial?
We did, we do, we have a, we have a category that is identified on page sixty-five that is neighborhood commercial. And there are small pockets of that on the map here. Um, there's, there's one over here, yeah, outside of downtown, there's also one here. And part of, I mean, I, I think you can certainly include neighborhood commercial in downtown, but, um, we, we can, you know, the, the downtown category sort of lump sums all of those types of, all of those opportunities for neighborhood commercial, for residential, single-family, for, um, a little bit of that mixed use in, in that, you know, downtown central business district area. So it lump sums it there, and we can certainly add more definition to it, or.
I don't know that we need to add it, but if someone, if I, on the north, on the north end of town, um, wanted to open a little food court, there's a, I think that car wash down there is still down there, the, the concrete is still down there. Say I wanted to open a little business on that little concrete, what type of business could I open?
I don't know if she has a food court technically, or usually during neighborhood commercial, you have things that are less impactful in terms of traffic to the neighborhood. And so you have things like home office use, you have things like hair salon, you have things like nail salon, things that you wanna be able to either walk to or get to very quickly within your, within your neighborhood. We used to, they were called pedestrian sheds in the B three. I would be very scared to go point out like, and say, okay, Lincoln and Garfield intersection is okay, Pacan and Maine is okay. And you know why I tell you that? Because those things end up leading to higher taxes later on for those areas, and it, it tells the developer, ooh, that one went up, let me go buy that really quick, because I can go do this. I think it should be on a case-by-case basis. We have an allowed list, if people wanna do that, they can do that, so long as.
By right.
So long as it looks the way it's supposed to look within the downtown. Anything more intense should come to Planning Commission and should have public input.
Okay, thank you.
Sylvia, can you? Well. So we're talking about this map as if we can tell a developer that they can or cannot do something based on this map, but it's my opinion that that's not what this map is. So a zoning map, hold on, hold on, hold on, a zoning map would be that.
This is, this feature zoning map, this is the, this is the microbiotic that gives that one.
It's a really generalized map.
Yeah, but, but it's not the zoning map. We have a zoning map that has P two, P three, P four, that's the actual on the ground.
No, 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 your zoning map.
No, 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 we're not changing that.
No, 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 no.
That's just it, we're not changing that, and this does not change that.
No, your zoning map is actually called your current land use map.
Okay.
Okay. So your current land use map is a snapshot of what is on the ground today.
Mm-hmm.
Your future land use map is aspirational where we want to be. But I use this in a variety of ways. And according to the local government code, I'm required to have these tools. And they are absolutely bumpers for the Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Adjustment, City Council, they are absolute tools. Can I bind a developer to it? Hmm, I'm gonna say, and I'll use the example. We get a development in and it, they wanna do commercial smack dab, or industrial smack dab in the heart of residential, and I'll say, we're gonna recommend denial because X, Y, Z.
But, but hold on, hold on.
Nope, hang on, hang on, I'm not done yet. So staff writes a report, we go to Planning Commission, Planning Commission bounces it around, what does staff recommend? We recommend denial. Planning Commission says, well, what does the future land use map say? Well, the future land use map says it should be like commercial or some kind of commercial. And I have planned my capital improvements to only deal with commercial of that component. So in essence, the Planning Commission is pretty much required to not harm the city. They take an oath to do no harm, right? To not harm the city. It gets kicked to City Council for recommendation. You guys ask the same thing, but sometimes you guys say, how can we make it work? And we say, well, you can do it with some variances and special permits, but let's not make that a habit, because every single time we do a zoning change, these maps change colors.
So now, let's go back to the thing that you were denying, they're recommending denial on. That was a zoning change, right? Yeah. And so that's kind of my point in this discussion, is that this is not a zoning map, and setting colors on here doesn't determine what a developer can or cannot build on the ground factually today. Right, the current land use map. If it is, if it is a zoning map, then yes, it is the, the ground truth. That's the, what people can or cannot build today.
This, this is absolutely the guidepost of what people can or can't build today.
Right, 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 agreed completely, yes.
Absolutely, so today, on the future land use map, we saw all of this.
All of that is red, yes.
And that's really just, I saw Frankie's comments on things, those are not, those are our purpose, we don't care. But if a developer were to come in and say, like, oh, I need, I say, I wanna do, I wanna do commercials. Then we look, our first, our very first thing is, we look at the future land use map, we look at the current land use map, and we look at the future land use map and say, you know what, I cannot recommend approval, and I cannot recommend approval because X, Y, Z. If we're doing our jobs on the back end, our capital plans match, I, I'm, I'm not overburdening the residents with any extra money that I have to spend, my trails plans match, park plans match, everything matches. And so that future land use map is my guidepost to so many things.
So I think then, my overall point, and Patrice, this kinda goes to, to some of the questions and also about Gateway, is that what is allowable is this map, not the future land use map based upon current zoning. And if a developer meets the rules and the, and the, and the land is zoned for something, then they can build it. And so the, the Gateway discussion was a rezoning request, was a request to both bodies to say, should we or should we not rezone this land? And ultimately, the bodies said no, that we shouldn't rezone that land, and I, I stand behind that decision. Um, but I guess I, I, like, the more detailed we make the future land use map, trying to turn it into a you can and can't build this or that at, at a micro level, it, it, it's like land develops because a private owner owns it. They come into capital and ha, they have an idea, and they think that they can make money if they use that capital to implement that idea on the land. And then they come, they intersect that idea with the city, and they, and, and so, and then they build what they're gonna build if it's allowed. If it's not allowed, they discuss zoning changes. Uh, but I guess the, my, my question is really trying to understand how this future land use map is used, and, and, and what it does kind of legally, or, um, and, and, and with that knowledge, then it would help, I'd say, us give feedback. Because it seems like the type of feedback that we're hearing on color at this or color at that to prevent Gateway is, doesn't help prevent Gateway if the current zoning allows it.
No, it doesn't help prevent Gateway, but.
Yeah.
I would, I'm gonna take it a step back from when you said a developer says can or can't make money. One of the first places they look.
Mm-hmm.
Is the future land use plan.
Fair enough.
At, well, they look at the current zoning first.
Right.
And they look at your future land use plan. You know why? Because I've been hired to do that, I'm hired to do that for companies.
Okay, so then that's a use. A, a developer will use it to determine if perhaps they can build that there.
And you know what else they look at? Then they go, hmm, let me look at the past zoning cases and the probability of something passing. And if the probability is low, are there tools that help me pass it? And I, I write these reports all the time. And then, okay, well, what are the rules in place? Even if I could do it through a successful rezoning, because the future land use map calls it, what are the tools in place that are gonna, that are gonna have me do certain things? I.e. tree mitigation, I.e. onsite drainage, what are those tools? All of those things are birth children of the comprehensive plan. This is, I'm, I'm gonna say, the future land use map is the firstborn of that comprehensive plan, and as the firstborn, has the ultimate responsibility. It is aspirational, as our firstborns tend to be, I wanna be as good as my big brother, my big sister. Um, it is aspirational, but it is a very, very important tool for us.
Yeah.
And so I get that we're in the details for some of the things we've seen, but there are absolutely critical places in here where we sent back to them and said, you need to color that a different color, because that's a drainage area, like that's a flood area, that better be colored green, because we're not trying to do anything there. So while it is somewhat aspirational, it is critically important, and the details are good right now.
I think, um, the most important part of this particular map, because we've referred to the twenty sixteen map plenty of times, is we're all here together, working together, collaborating, doing, doing the hard work over the past nine months to create this. So we're, we can set the expectation to our community and to the developers on how we see our city growing. It's not, it, it's not in stone, it's not binding, but when the, like I said, when the developers go on to look and say, hey, we wanna put this here, they're gonna look at this map, hey, you know what, this is a great spot for this commercial space. The, the city of Bastrop was already put in the time to say, hey, this would be an area for it to do so. And then they're gonna bring up these properties one at a time and re, ask for rezones, because they know, hey, this is an appropriate spot, they've already determined and set these expectations for us. As planning and zoning, we haven't really had this tool because it's been so outdated, but I think it's really important to have something like this, and having this expectation to know that we're making the right decision. We're making a decision that aligns with not only all of the, all of the group thought and, and work that we put in, but also the, the citizens and everybody that, that, hey, this, this is a good plan. So yes, the future land map isn't legally binding or isn't code, but it's also very important that we have this, so that we are putting that out there to everyone, like, this is what we see it.
And, and I don't dispute that it's, that it is important to have it, and, but I'm trying to figure out, like, the list of reasons why it's important.
Yeah.
Yes.
And because then that list of reasons then drives the, I don't know, the, the things that are important to put into it.
Absolutely. Number one is setting expectations for everybody.
One is setting expectations.
Setting expectation for you guys when making final approval, for us when we're talking to developers and they're asking for rezonings and making recommendations, and then the very beginning, when they're even bringing it up to Sylvia, hey, I wanna do this here. They should already know, before they even talk to her, it's appropriate. They look at the future land use map, they look at what we recommend, and as far as building types and whatnot, and they can make their decisions in there before they start wasting their time and, and, and going through the process of, of evaluating the property.
I, I wanna tell you who the second middle child is. So this is the firstborn child, right? The future land use map. The second child is the capital improvement plan. There's a reason why Planning Commission is the capital improvement and the impact fee. There's a reason why in the code, in the statute, the Planning Commission has to approve capital improvement plans. There's a reason why they're tasked with impact fees, because if they're doing their job and I'm doing my job, we are allocating money based on what we said we were gonna do. The youngest child that everybody loves, right, the favorite, I'm assuming we have a three-family, we have a three-children family, the young child that everybody loves is the kid, right, the little baby kid who's happy. What's born out of this is the parks we're able to put in, the cool stuff, all of the cool stuff comes out of one and two. I can't ever get to a cool little kid, I get to a spoiled brat if I miss these first two steps. And so from, there's, I know, it sounds like, oh, it's kind of aspirational, but there is a method to the madness. There is a method to the madness, I promise, we deal in that madness every single day. But, um, the important, and, and I'm not gonna say that this map is perfect by any means, because as I was telling her, when they came the first time, it was a couple of colors, they came the second time, it was a couple of colors. The final map they turned into us, I was like, we still need to color it different, something else has come up. It is going to evolve, and our zoning reports, when we do a change of zoning, our future ordinances that come forward should also say approving a change of zoning and also an amendment to the future land use map. That's what was missing out of our twenty sixteen, that's why there's so many holes. Our twenty sixteen map should have kept it up every single time we did a zoning, and you know why? Because then we develop patterns of behavior, and we develop CIP plans, and we develop, oh, there's a neighborhood there, maybe, maybe they should put a park. So, okay.
Let me just add one component in, on, because the developer is extremely important for future land use to know. My concern are our citizens, and they need to know. And if you see something on the future land use map, you need to know what to expect, because you might be living in an area that doesn't have anything to do with those colors right there, so.
Ishmael's family was a perfect example.
Exactly, so what I'm asking you to do, and everyone listening, and, and please spread the word, you need to have input on, do you like this? What don't you like about it? You know, that's the most important factor to me.
Can I address that one issue, and then I'll try to shut up?
You're not, you're not here to shut up, we're here to talk, so go ahead, please.
We love to hear your voice.
People have a tendency to get tired of me talking. I, I'm wondering if it's possible, we've got a lot of city activities coming up, different things happening in the city. What if we had, uh, a place where we can set up some of these maps and things like that, wherever we're having a fun activity, where we've got people out? So that we can capture a lot more people than a four o'clock in the afternoon meeting where people are working?
Well, Patrice, we've had more than the four o'clock.
I understand that, I'm just wondering if that's something that would be possible?
Um, it is possible. My, I'm, I'm gonna tell you why my desperation for this tool is, because we're working on a very outdated tool.
I got it. So here's my question, when do we have something fun coming up? Soon?
It's called council meetings, aren't those fun for you?
No.
And we have a, what do we have, a car show, we have a holiday?
So, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking that if we've got something soon, let's say we have to postpone our voting meeting a week, so that we can have some kind of activity where we've got a lot of people that are showing up. I mean, we had ten people come today, and it, we just have not had, in my opinion, a lot of public comment. And I just think, I mean, if we take what we think is a good map, that this body's that this body says, okay, we like this map. We think this is a good map. And we say, okay, city, here's what we're going to do. Just to see if we have any kind of whiplash from folks that are saying, you know, that's really not going to work for me because I, you know, I live here and what's it going to do to traffic and whatever? I don't know what people would say. But I just think it really gives the citizens an opportunity to respond. And then we know that we've done a really good job.
Have we done any public outreach specifically on the future land use map at all?
Yes. The, the community activities that we've had, we've, through the survey process, we also provided the old future land use map and had some questions related to that. This is, this is the first time that you all are seeing this version. So this is, this is sort of the final meeting in terms of the review for this version after all the other input that we've had, so.
Yeah, maybe to her point, it would be good just to use a mailer or do something to get this particular map out. Because people don't like to be there for the, along the way. They only see the final product, you know? So if we could get this final product in front of somebody, would that, would that help, you think?
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking that if we, we could kind of shorten the time period to help Sylvia get this thing moving along the bus.
Let's just put it on Facebook and say it's secret. Nobody should ever see it. And then everybody will want to see it. And then they'll look at it and it'll, everything will be cool.
What, what event do we have coming up? Do we have, I mean, an event where it would be easy for us to have? And maybe, maybe we have some of the people from planning and zoning there to help with this, Sylvia, so that you don't have to have an overburden on the staff. I don't know. I'm just, I'll be there. I mean, I can be there.
Well, I think one idea might be, Sylvia, how many, do we still do a lot of electricity mailouts? Or do you think online is more, is kind of exceeded?
Yeah, our online payments are, we, we do a few mailers, but not a lot. But for it to go into the, for it to go into the water utility mailer, I need about a 45-day lead time.
Oh, wow. Yeah, see, I'm thinking if we do something, and if it's more interactive, people will ask questions, I think.
Well, I mean, we're, we, I, I mean, we, we do a lot of, I think they did an adequate amount of workshops. The problem is people aren't coming. So I don't know that more workshops are the answer either. Because it's, you know, we're spending staff time for 10 people to show up every time we do a workshop. At some point, we got to think outside the box and figure out, to your point, how we can better reach people. I mean, we, we do what our boards and volunteers thing. And I think, what, five people showed up last time? It's hard, unfortunately, to get people to come, whether it's at 5:00 or 6:00. So I think to reach people, we got to figure out a better way. I thought the electricity bill thing would be a good opportunity, but 45 days out, I don't know that we want to go that far out, right? So Sylvia, what is your timeframe of two council meetings, two more council meetings? Because what, what if we did some type of workshop, starting, I know this is a lot on y'all, but our council meeting started at 6:30. We can have a 5:00 showing before a council meeting for people to come in and look at the maps. I don't know how much.
I, I think what I would, and, and please, outside world and people here, don't misconstrue what I'm about to say, okay? It's always the shock factor that gets people into action. And I almost feel like I can put this map out there, our GIS team can publish this map tomorrow and say, hey, pick your house, where are you? Your stuff's going to change. It may not change, but you know what I mean? You want to get 600 clicks on Facebook, you, you tell people something's going to change.
My part, what about a mass text? Is there a way to send out a mass text with a link? We don't have that capability.
Yeah, we don't do that.
Why don't we?
Well, I don't want to do a Fear Factor where we incite fear on Facebook and then every, you know, we end up having to go to the convention center again. But, I mean, we need to find a good way to do it.
Well, and I say, and when I say Fear Factor, I mean, to everybody's point, oftentimes, these things are not well-attended. And they're not well-attended until it impacts you. And I use Mr.
There's a reason for that. They don't really care.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Harris's, Mr. Harris's family cared, Mr. Fa, Mr. Harris's family compound cared when this city had, did a massive rezoning as part of the prior code adoption and rezoned their property commercial unbeknownst to them because, right? And so then they had a property tax implication.
Yep.
Those, those are, they hit you in the wallet.
General land use.
I'm, I'm okay to put it off. I, I'm, I will do whatever this body wants us to do. I just want you to know, we're already operating with like one hand behind our back, two ankles tied together.
So what's the fastest way we could do this?
Well, I, I have a couple of ideas. Let's be honest with ourselves. I, I believe the number one reason why people don't attend is convenience. It's inconvenient to take time out of your day to go somewhere. It's inconvenient for them to come to our workshop. It's also inconvenient for us to operate outside of our normal meeting times. So there's, there's a huge gap I'm seeing between us wanting people to come to us and they're not wanting to come to us because it's inconvenient. So we should figure out ways similar to what you were saying. We got to go to them. It doesn't have to be fun, sitting out in front of a grocery store with a booth, with these, with a big future land use map and flyers or something, just talking and having conversations with people. It's convenient to them because they're already there and they're walking by. Five minutes of their time is nothing. We're going to have to put in the time. If this is serious, something serious that we all want to do, we're going to have to come up with volunteers that are going, we're going to have to take time out of our day and go out and talk to these people.
So what's, could we do something at HEB, Sylvia?
So we'll have to talk to HEB management. I don't know. So, so right now, for example, on Facebook Live, we have 628 views. We have four people who've commented and their comments are, we can't hear you. We've had eight people who have emojied. And most of those emojis are thumbs up. So what, what does the thumbs up mean? Is 628 good? It's only four comments? And it's only two shares? So.
Yeah.
I think you did a great job with the map. If you look at this map compared to the old map and realistically what, the way the development and all the growth is going, this map is a lot more spot on than the old map we're placing.
I think you could work on this for six months and it'd still be the same.
If we are going to present something, because honestly, I'm going to tell you, I like that really big future land use map there. I want one right next to it that says current land use map. I don't want my little piece of paper here. You present this to the public? I mean, we have studied this. Our public, they're very intelligent people, but they're not going to take all day long and look at all the indexes and let's refer to this page. That, that's not what they want. They want to know how they're going to be affected, what's going on right now where they are, and how's this going to change? That's what we need to make it very simple and explain to them. And if we do, however we reach out, let's make sure when we're, the information we're giving is very understandable where they're not thinking, I don't even understand what you're doing now. Because they get frustrated. And that's why they don't attend a lot of times, too.
So.
I like the idea of HEB myself. And I'll tell, I will show up and help.
Well, we need to set up a small task force to take care of that and get it knocked out. Set up deadlines, hey, we're going to, we want this done by X date. We need to make sure that we're doing community outreach this many a times by that date.
Well, I just, I just think if we have this map, we all agree, we leave here tonight, we like the map, we like the changes. That's what we would like to propose to the community. We take that map, we go somewhere, we say, this is what we're proposing. We do it one last time. They either come, they don't come, whatever. And then we're done.
Well, may I make a statement? You guys are elected, you know, to do this job. You appoint us to do this job. Let's do our job. That's what they're counting on. And we'll do the best we can for them. Let's move on. Let's get it done.
Okay, so Councilperson Paul, sir. You had a look on your face that led me to believe that you might want to say something.
All this talk about community outreach, and there's two raised hands in the audience. I would like to, if you.
Yes, so I was going to ask the audience if anyone had any comments, but I wanted to see if you wanted to make one before I did that.
I do, I do have a question. How easy is it to amend this map? Is it like going through a comprehensive update again? Like if we, once we adopt it, is it something that we?
I think what I've heard is that they want us to change it every single time we have a new development coming.
It's not difficult. It's a, it's notice, it's planning commission meeting, and then city council meeting. It's, it's a, there's a process, but it's not.
Okay, awesome.
So what I heard earlier was that each time we have a new development, that the future land use map color will change to actual.
Yes, but that's.
And so we will be modifying it each time a new development comes in.
And that, that happens because it went through planning commission for a zoning change. It went to city council, so P&amp;Z, city council.
And so what I'm hearing is that it'll be updated and kept updated relatively frequently.
That makes me happy that we can change.
Well, and it's not just about, okay, so let me, let me, let me just stop you right there because I think you guys have taken a tangent. It, it's, yes, we will amend it every single time. But then this body, planning commission, is tasked with, what are the patterns of behavior that are happening? If we continue to allow commercial to strip out 20, for example, and it, and 20 turns from yellow to red, okay, then this body is tasked with going, hey, what the heck is going on there? Go give me a new capital improvement study because you're going to strip out. And is the water line enough there? Is the wastewater line enough there? So it is really, I mean, we're back to first grade watching patterns. But it is their important patterns for us to understand. But yes, it's a relatively simple amendment.
Also, the old land use map was pre-Elon Musk.
That's what I was telling.
Yeah, that's why it's so red.
And if you guys, today we attended the East Austin Business Summit. As Mr. Lariano can attest, the, the amount of growth that is spilling over from the east to us.
Yeah.
Not, not office space anymore because they're pretty much maxed out office space. But single-family and planned unit developments and specialized, what I'm going to call specialized, single-family, multifamily type developments that are heading our way anyway, are just by nature going to push some of these colors to a different color, especially along those arterials. And it's, you know, again, this is super important for us as we get people who speculate every single day. And I understand it's important for a resident. You want to know if the city planned to do something. You've always been residential, you've always been rural residential, kind of like the folks up on 95 in Mr. Harris's neighborhood. You've always been rural residential and the city rezoned you to P5 and you had no idea. Now there's somebody trying to build a Starbucks right there at the corner, so.
Okay, so we're going to take some questions or comments from those that are in the audience and.
Keith has been trying to talk for a while.
I've been trying to talk for a while.
Okay, well, sorry, let's.
Going back to try to get the public's interest in what we're doing, get the commentary from folks around. Once you, the average person that walks around our community, once they determine that that's not in my backyard, they don't care. You've got to get them to generate interest. This is your community. We need your input. Because it affects, this growth affects our schools, our water, sewers, emergencies. We've got to get them somehow to get involved. Because like I said, once they determine it's not in my backyard, they don't care.
Well, that's still input.
Yeah, but it's, if you find out that that corner lot is now being developed into something, you're going to complain, but once that's determined, you're going to walk away and nobody else cares.
I appreciate that perspective because one of the things that I think, that, I think that is a problem. I think that we as a city should do a better job of educating the community as to how does, how does rooftops bring retail? How does, how does having more homes bring down the value of rent, the cost of rent? And I think that if we could put some type of council workshop together, even for planning and zoning, that would help educate the community as how does growth impact them? How does it save them money? How does it reduce our taxes? How does it do this? How does it do that? That would be helping the community understand, you know, you're, you're still going to have people that just don't want it in their backyard. But I think if people understood how growth would help them in the long run or hurt them in the long run, we might be able to transition this, you know, growth spurt that we're going to be experiencing here over the next five years. So I actually like that.
What about some kind of fact sheets on the website? That explains it? But we, we still have the problem, how do we attract people to the workshops? I mean, Sylvia's been killing herself trying to figure out how to do it. Mailers.
When I say workshop, I mean a council meeting. Because you do get people to watch a council meeting. So during a council meeting, we have some type of workshop on land use development that would help the residents understand what's negative about growth, what's positive about growth, how can it, you know, impact us in the long run? To help people not necessarily say, okay, yeah, bring everybody in, but better understand that we, we have to make decisions. And it, it may be against not in my backyard. It may be for developers, but we as a council have to make the right decision for the whole community in terms of the growth.
Okay, Dax.
So who in this room right now, everybody has social media or looks at social media? Anybody in this room have social media? Everybody in this room have social media? How many times do you comment sometimes on social media when things are important to you? Quite a few times, don't we? I don't think, I think we got to be innovative. I think we have to be different and creative. If we are going to reach out to our community and want them to be involved, number one, fear is a factor. Look at the two town halls we've had. Gateway, huge. North End Prairie, huge. Because people were scared of what the heck was going to happen. This should scare people because there's some changes on this that y'all need to know about. So let's be crea, if we're going to do an outreach, people don't want to come to city council meetings, you know? I mean, they'll listen and they'll comment online, but they, they don't want to do that. Because as Gary said, they've got us up here. So we've got to be creative if we're going to do this. We've got to think outside the box to do this. But what I am going to please ask, if we do this, when we do this, however we do this, please have the future land use map, but have your current land use map. Because if they don't know what they have now, how are they going to know the future's any worse? So we've got to give them a comparison and make it very simple, however we do it.
I, I want to say one more thing about social media. I was visiting with my neighbor the other day who's, he's a little older than I am. He's late 70s. He doesn't do social media. He's retired, he never looks at Facebook. And he had some things to complain about in terms of getting in and out of the neighborhood. And I said, well, we're having this meeting. You should come and express your feelings about it. And his response was, I can't. I can't leave my wife. She's, you know, she's impaired. So I don't, I mean, I get it that a lot of people do Facebook, but there are a lot of people who don't.
Yeah, I get you. But there are a lot of people that aren't here tonight.
Right, I know.
Sylvia, can we put the future, the existing and the, and the proposed future in the library? Because a lot of people go to the library. So can we put it in the library with a QR code that would link them to the website? I think that would be a good way to get it to the community as well.
Sorry, Dax.
A good way to think of these maps, too, is if you compare it to the original HEB that was here a long time ago to the new HEB that's going to be completed in a couple of months, then that's just the old map, the new map. That's how, you have to look at it with some imagination on how it's going to end up at the end of the day.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's, let's do the audience discussion there for a moment. I do want to make one comment about social media, and that is be careful in commenting on each other's posts about city topics like this because that can quickly get to a walking quorum and then becomes illegal. So let's not do that. Okay, so we're going to start with Dax. You have some comments about the land use map or perhaps how to, ideas on how to reach out to people. And then if anyone else would like to speak, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, four or five or so, good. So talk and, yeah.
Dax Avrillak, 779 Peach Creek Road. I get to enjoy Bastrop as like the third child, your parks, your gardens, your fun stuff. Okay, so to your point with the library, people go to the library, setting up land uses. It is also tax appraisal contest time. And I get to help all my neighbors contest our taxes out in Rosanke where we've been hit with a $200,000 increase on 10 to 15 acres. Wild. So I don't know if it's appropriate or allowed that the city can go to the CAD's offices and set up future land use maps for just the city to say, hey, look at your backyard. It might be something else which will be impacting your taxes, but I'm.[1796.06]
We, we absolutely can. Bastrop CAD can add a layer for us.
Okay, fantastic. Because I know that when I go to the CAD with my neighbors, we have a very intense discussion about why our neighbor's lot of 10 acres just sold for 500K when it should be way worse and why it's impacting our taxes. So if there's like places, the library, HEB, the tax office where we're going to contest our land would be a nice place to put a future and current land use map just so that neighbors can see where they live, at least within city. And see if they're getting marginally closer to a commercial district or they're getting moved around, um, just as a way to work within the city's ability to put presentation material in the view of it rather than y'all having to set up more overtime, more weekends, more places. And then the other one is big groundwork effort. If y'all have GIS data of businesses like gas stations or I would use legacies, businesses that have existed in the community for so long, they become new hubs. I know if there's a new gas station being built, it's going to get attached to another housing development. That's just a convenient thing. So some of your future land use map, if there's a secondary overlay of this is a gas station with a Jalisco's, this is a gas station with this, it, it would make sense to start trying to figure out where your current gas stations are, future gas stations are, and then that becomes a little development bubble. Yeah, just so that you have a convenient neighborhood. You have a neighborhood that connects to a little amenity, a gas station, a little food place, and it helps. But otherwise, that, yeah, the, the big focus is the library, the CAD offices, a place to put this, this information in front of someone who might be getting stuck at a bureaucratic, you know, post. Otherwise, it would only last for two weeks as the elections. The courthouse would also be a nice entryway for just presenting the same information. If you're going to have maybe 2,000 people walking through the courthouse to vote, that's another hub where each polling location could have map data. Okay, that's it.
Thanks, Dax. Okay, who wants to go next? Just come on up here. Just fight amongst yourself.
Hi, my name is Cheryl, resident of the Purple Area. And thank you, Carrie, for pointing out the obvious, which was that we're here raising our hand. And, and it was very much the experience was we didn't matter. And then especially once you said that, and then the conversation kept going and we still weren't getting called on while y'all were talking about how do you have citizens feel involved? And as a citizen, I might, I'm, I'm agitated now, but I'm going to calm back down. But I just want you to know that, like, it might be like a major mindset on, on your, a mindset change on y'all's part. And there was another piece that came up a couple of times about people don't care. And I think it's not that people don't care, it's that people are stressed out, people are tired, people are busy, and they're just like, like there's a lot happening in the world right now, there's a lot happening in our nation, and people are stressed out. There's like only so much they can actually handle. So I don't think it's appropriate or fair to say that people don't care. It's the, kind of the convenience factor, but also just that they're, they're stressed out. And, um, and it's, I think it's more honorable to consider that than to say that we don't care. My ideas for how to get it out in front of people kind of have been hit on, like HEB I think is a huge one. And Walmart's probably another huge one, maybe the movie theater, you know? And the library, I think are, those are all really good ones. And any events, like I get, there's a bird thing coming up. So, um, you know, like any events, but I know that those things all take coordination and people power and, and you guys do all have jobs, you know, and lives also. But I think those are good ways to get the word out. And then the other comment that I had was, and I may have misunderstood, but it sounds like the, so there's the map and there's the color coding of all the different maps, and then there's what really happens, like there are the allowances and then the colors change. That's a little unsettling because I don't like, as a resident of the Purple Area, I would really like to know that it's protected. And I do think that a certain amount of things like tracees, you know, those are really useful for the, for towns, for neighborhoods, to have places that we can walk to to get coffee or get a few groceries or like small grocery store on the east side of the river. So I think that a certain amount of a certain kind of local independent development in the Purple Area is probably important, but, um, but as a resident of the city, I'd like to know that some of those things are just locked in and they're not going to change. That, they really concerned me when somebody was saying, you know, yeah, well, it's purple for now, but you know? You know, because the experience on this end is somebody corporate's going to come in, wave around a whole bunch of money, people are going to say, uh huh, go, go right ahead, you know, put your McDonald's right there, and then we're going to be stuck with it in the neighborhood. So, um, huh, look at all those zeros, time for me to go.
Cheryl, can you tell us your last name just for the record?
Crokerberg, Cheryl Crokerberg. And I'm the owner of Bastrop Montessori and a longtime resident of Bastrop since, uh, seventy eight or something like that.
Thank you.
Long time, thank you.
Okay, who's next?
And thank y'all for all the effort that you put in. I'm sure y'all work really, really hard.
Hello, Heather Green, 2007 pecan. I have a friend, I joke at school, I have a BFF known as ChatGPT. And I, while sitting here, just simply typed in to give me ideas. But like park and plan pop up, something where you have these sign, these signs, by the way, I just want to commend all of you, you specifically, on how hard you guys have worked to make what our future land use map looks like, match the, the direction we have been going and the changes we have made with our current code, um, because that's big, specifically for me, who is now zoned in downtown Bastrop. And I love, I love the direction that we are going and protecting what we have while also guiding the future, um, because I know that that's something that we have to do. And I know, I, you guys have only seen me recently because something made me mad. And so I know that it's hard to get involvement. I show up regularly now and do my best to try and, and share the information that I'm given with the people that I know, simply for the fact that not a lot of people come and they don't know about anything until something makes them mad. So I try my best to make sure that we don't get to that point, especially, especially with the people that I know, um, to make sure that we don't get to a point where they're surprised, they're upset about something. I know that this specifically, you're not going to get a ton of feedback until somebody gets mad. And I think the biggest thing for me is that it is a tool that we use in-house, not me specifically, but Sylvia uses in-house to guide what our future looks like. And I know that changing it means that it looks a little bit different for some people, but it, like we've said time and time again, I've heard you guys say, it doesn't change what is allowable there. You guys still have the right to vote on those things, um, which I think means that we should maybe move forward to give Sylvia and you guys all the tools that you need in order to make the best decisions for us. This right here is 10,000 times better than what we're currently using. And if we need to make other changes, then like we said, the tools are there for us to have another conversation and move forward in that direction. I do think there are a couple of tweaks to make before we get to that final step, but I, I don't think that we should continue. I mean, I, I would love to say that you're going to have, I have this long list, I was going to stand up here and say, do all of these fun pop-up things, people are going to only show up if they want to. And the people that are here today want, want to be here. I specifically love the direction that this is going and would love for us to just make a couple of tweaks and move forward to give you guys all the tools that you need to make us grow in the right direction. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather.
So you start off, 1401 Hill Street. Patrice, you were talking about different ideas and innovations. One idea would be be able to utilize market days. People are already there and maybe on each corner or, you know, dispersed out, members P and Z or council members, I know you want to do more, stand there or other people's representatives and, you know, have a banner sign or something to bring attention to the people so that they know, hey, this is coming. Another idea would be to have neighborhood liaisons.
Of what?
Lia, lia, liaison.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhood liaisons.
I got it, I got it.
Representatives. And that way, when something's coming up, they can have a yard sign and, and already like one generic email for, you know, call it, you know, River Site Grow Bastrop something or Pecan Grow Bastrop. That way, you put the sign in the yard, people will see that, hey, this is coming up, and then they could email their questions. It's, you know, an idea, maybe have two or three representatives per area. I have another one, but I go, oh, and then one other idea was not necessarily for attendance, but, um, someone had mentioned parking in the downtown area. We don't have a whole lot of parking, but one idea is maybe at some point build a small parking area, maybe one story elevated, something small, but, um, start charging for parking like a quarter. Right now, we don't get anything and it might be a good revenue maker, you know, for when we have a lot of people who are on weekends. And maybe not necessarily meters or just something voluntary. It's an idea, making something like super affordable, minimum, but something's better than nothing.
Great question for you, but don't run off, don't run off. Just a curious question, do you have an HOA where you live?
No.
Because you could get a representative in that group to funnel into your community.
Yeah, HOAs is what I.
No HOA. I live out front of Hill Street.
Sorry.
No, that's a great thing.
Okay, who's next?
Pablo Serna, 1104 Hill Street. And, um, those great ideas. And, uh, the one thing I would like to see on this map is we're talking about walkability. And as you can see on that red, right down the middle of that is the highway, not very walkable. And I know on the other maps, we have the pedestrian shed, that, you know, that half-mile circle. So I would be interested to see, it looks like if we do what we've been talking about, which is really preserved to the east side of the river and watch the natural resources up by the state park. We do have, you know, I know you have that downtown commercial and that hatched area along Chestnut, that's pretty much a walkable area. But what happens over here and where would those areas be? That would, maybe that can be added to the map to see how we're going to probably have to grow a neighborhood or some kind of city center on this other side of the river for, for future development.
Maybe at a, like.
Under a minute.
Maybe at a hospital and some other things on there that.
Okay, who's next? Matt? So first and last name and address, please.
Uh, Matt Walker, 131 Trailstone Drive. Uh, it was mentioned, social media as a potential outreach. I was just wondering if there is like a city council or zoning planning specific account that people could send direct messages to? Don't want to get into, I believe you called it a walking forum or whatever.
Quorum, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that applies to you guys as well.
No, applies to us too.
Yeah.
But just something that people could DM directly to the main account. That way it's just another outreach, uh, potential for people to get feedback on it.
Thank you, Matt. Who's next? Okay. Well, it looks like we exhausted the audience. Okay. Um, well, we certainly have talked a lot about this future land use map. Let me ask you a question. How much more do we have?
We have a few more slides and, and a lot of the slides are also just, um, some summaries of the community goals, which are out on those boards, and then, uh, some prompting questions, which you all have already had very robust discussion this evening about. So we do not need to go through those questions. But I, I want to make a, so I want to try to get through the, the last few slides that are relevant. And then, but before I do that, I, I want to make a couple mentions, um, of some next steps, sort of, sort of understanding the operation, you know, order of operations when it comes to future land use map, your existing land use map and your place zoning area. And so one thing I want to say is that.
What is place zoning?
That's your zoning map, that's your P four, P, P five, P three.
But is that also the current land use map?
They are, they are not the same map. Uh, your, your current, this map right here, let me, let me just go back very quickly. This is the zoning place type map. So this is what, what developers will say, okay, I'm zoned to do the following things in here. And I want to point this map, map out again because in the update, one of the things that we tried to do is bridge to where, if there is a misalignment in the future land use map with existing zoning, we've said in here, this is going to apply to P four and you may consider the following things to update your, your zoning area to, to better align with the code. Because we're not doing code updates in this. We, we can't do that in this portion. So this would direct staff to evaluate, are we in the process of possibly including that? Should we explore that option? How do we go about doing that? So that's sort of the next order of operation after the, um, adoption of your, your future land use map is, is going back to your code and identifying where, where some of those changes can happen. And you're already doing that and staff has been doing that, Sylvia's been doing that. So I just want to make sure we.
Real quick, I'll remind you, it's like, we're again going back as Sylvia was saying, you'll just say, this is our existing place type slash zoning map. There was a comment made, if somebody wants to come here and do something, they can automatically do it. It doesn't fit that category, there's a zoning change process, again, for the public, that we had to send out letters, put up public signs. So just to sit, somebody coming in and buying a piece of property, you want to do a different use, again, using Gateway, all the public notices. Again, we support any information you can have as far as communicating to the public. We've attended every event we could prior to this, Mardi Gras, Open Empty Bowl, et cetera, but any discussion we can have, as far as we have, we can engage the public is great. And this is kind of like the last party before you send out your wedding invitations. This is a work session for the public, P and Z and council. The true, I guess, wedding party is May first. This isn't, isn't the end, May first, and we have to advertise these things. And when you start changing dates and stuff, it gets costly, it's time consuming on staff. P and Z will hear this on May first. So we have May first for the first P and Z meeting. P and Z is a recommending body to city council. City council, this was advertised in the paper. We have May 13th and May 27th. So we have another whole month to the second reading of city council.
Thank you, Doc, for reminding that we were at Mardi Gras, we were at the Empty Bowl, we're not, you know.
Yeah, but Sylvia, did you have these maps? I mean, you did, you had the maps, great.
And again, I want to stress, this isn't the end, we have another whole month, depends on what council, P and Z can table and talk about it, city council. But officially, this has been advertised for May first, May 13th, May 20th. So we have another whole month for that second reading to community input. And again, city staff is open, you can come in, call us, see us. We're glad to meet with any citizen at any time to discuss any concerns.
Yeah, so, yes, Carrie, the word person, the map changed slightly because we inverted some colors to match specifically.
I want to see these maps until this agenda was posted. And these are the ones we're, we're voting on, right?
Sure, that what changed was a color because industrial wasn't gray. So it, the, the content, the substance hasn't really changed. Has it? I'm, I'm looking at our consultant right now. How much of the substance has changed from our last color discussion?
There's probably been, I think the, the biggest change is just coloring the downtown to that purple rather than that gray, um, that, that I can recall right now, yeah.
And we've given you, I think tonight with our input, we've had quite a few recommendations that you're, I mean, that you're taking in that need to change. And we brought this to, to your attention so we can make those tweaks, right? So when our next version comes out, just with those tweaks, right? That's what we'll have? And, and I think, you know, Ms. Green, Heather, she is right. We, poor, poor James Cowie has been, I mean, he was Mr. Bastrop for a long time with these maps at every event. So there is time is what James is saying. And we can have the tweaks done, we can work on it, but let's keep moving forward with this so we don't just have them, you know, next year at Christmas of next year, we're still working on that. I'm not trying to rush anything, but we really have had quite a bit, yeah.
This has been going on for nine months now. Don't forget that people that seem to think we're pushing everything fast through, wake up people, just because you haven't been paying attention, you know?
Sylvia.
We've been working on it for a while. We've been working on it for a while. I got one more thing to say about that. You know, I guess it gets back, you know, a horse designed by a committee is a giraffe. Understand that. Just keep talking, you know, turn into a giraffe, yeah. Move it on.
Sylvia, is there a way that, that we talked about putting them in the library, but is there a way to link, put the QR code that links to this presentation instead of like going to our website and having to try to find information? I think that that would be good, and I agree, with the amount of meetings we have coming up, there's still going to be more discussion between planning and zoning and council, but getting the poster boards up with the QR code in strategic places, I think would be adequate way to try to get it out.
Okay.
And on the Facebook.
So hold on, no, no.
No, I just had a question.
Hold on, hold on. So Carlos Liriano has his hand up. I'd like to hear what he has to say, and then I'd like to get back to the, the remaining slides that we have for our consultant.
Carlos Liriano, I live at 1208 Church and also have Los Pines Toyota. This is a great discussion, and I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I'm compelled to bring attention to this. The city is, the, the amount of land that the city has available is, is not endless. So this process of having this future land use map is our opportunity also to visualize some of the future needs that this city has. So when we have an open piece of land and someone wants to come in and chop it up and just put a business in, once that is cut into certain pieces, that land may not necessarily be available for some of the future needs that the city has. For example, this community is going to need a hospital. This community has to have a hospital. Where is it going to go? Right? Is it going to go out in the country somewhere or is it going to go where the doctors want to be, where the accessibility needs to be? So tonight, y'all are discussing the future of Bastrop. I encourage you to visualize, today I went to a meeting in Austin. It is incredible what's coming to the east side of Austin, out by the airport. Austin is struggling right now to handle the traffic, handle the accessibility. Bastrop has the same issues. Bastrop is not going to be the same Bastrop that it is today just 10 years from now. So please take this very, take this process, and I encourage everyone in the audience, you know, sometimes we have an issue and we'll get 100 people here. Sometimes this meeting has to be moved to the convention center because we have an uproar, right? Well, if we visualize, maybe we can minimize some of that unexpected discussion. So please, take this process. This is a very important process. Sylvia, thank you for stating that it, that you use it. We need to know that you use it, and I encourage all of y'all to visualize what the future of Bastrop and their needs are going to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you all for all those comments, they're very informative, and I appreciate the discussion that you all have, certainly will help us. And yes, we will certainly take the, the content and the content of today's discussion and tweak this map and, and provide that to staff to get that out to you as well. So a couple other things I wanted to point out through the update process is that we also reviewed or reaffirmed and revised the growth vision and framework. And so this is a, a growth principle that we developed and massaged a little bit based on some of the feedback that we heard from the surveys. And it also includes some identifying bullets that we, we also heard from the community. So just going to read it, I know you all can read it up here on the screen, but it really states that, you know, as your community grows, that the city is going to implement policies and programs and investments and strategies that prioritize fiscal responsibility. And that really speaks to that infrastructure. And, and also include the preservation of Bastrop's natural environment and small-town character. So the, the last portion, that preservation of Bastrop's natural environment, small-town character, is the addition to the previous one. And then we added these bullets here that really talk about, so what does that, some of that mean? That means encouraging that low impact or appropriately scaled development that aligns with existing infrastructure. It's promoting some of that contiguous growth, you know, you, you see that growth that's already happening on 71 or in some of those residential areas. Targeting that growth along those corridors, making sure that it balances both that economic opportunity that you're seeing, all of that eastward expansion, with community character. And then finally, of course, really making sure that all of these elements in that, in that framework really works to protect the health, safety, and well-being of the community. So again, some of the themes that we heard, I'm not going to belabor this, but, but we've talked about this already, those land use development patterns, you know, what sorts of patterns are happening, preservation of that rural character, those utilities and infrastructure, that traffic that you're talking about, those transportation corridors. Those are certainly policy themes that would need to be continued and explored through this update process. And we've included in, in the update, some of those particular policies that might be reviewed. And I don't have them here in the presentation, but also, these are the revised goals for community growth. So I think previously, there were really only six of, six of them, and we, we've added or modified these to really reflect more of the language and the, the vision that we heard from the community and the stakeholders and comments that you all have provided, both at council and planning and zoning. So each of these goals have been revised to really make sure that we incorporate things that are talking about nature-based solutions or enhancing neighborhood connectivity, preserving those existing neighborhoods and that small-town charm with that context-sensitive development. Each of the goals that we revised or updated also include some specific strategies, and those are also available in the update as well. There are five new goals for land use and community image. There, we essentially replaced all of the previous goals, there were only two goals in the land use and community image one. And so what we did is we really tried to hone in on some very specific goals that talk about context-sensitive character, community character, expansion of park access, looking at balancing that development with those established communities, making sure that there is still, you know, preservation of that low-density neighborhood to really maintain that small-city atmosphere here in Bastrop. And so those are, those are the five new goals for the land use and community image. And again, those also include objectives and specific strategies in the update as well. Okay, these are the questions you all have already asked and answered. So just really quickly, last, last slide here, next steps and upcoming milestones. And, and Doc also touched on this as well, sort of what that process is moving forward. So you still have, there's still opportunity for discussion and conversation moving forward, but really with that, that, that May goal for getting something in front of your council to, to adopt. But again, we will take the feedback that we heard this evening, we will revise this map, provide that to staff, make sure it is, it is what they heard as well, and get all of the information so that that can be utilized for any additional outreach that you all intend to do. So, thank you very much for your time this evening and, and your comments.
Can I ask one question? Because I'm confused.
The pink area for downtown, are we still, are we going to be calling that historic Bastrop, Sylvia? Or is that, because I saw on one of the bullets over there that we're going to maintain the grid pattern in historic Bastrop? Is that only the two or three streets that are considered historic, or is that going to be the whole pink area?
That whole pink area.
The whole pink area. So that's basically the new historic Bastrop. Okay, thank you.
Pink, purple, red.
Yeah, whatever that covers.
Yellow, green.
Right.
That purple and that gray drive me nuts, y'all, because they look so slimy.
Okay, council. Looks like we are on to item four, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Lee.
Right.
Okay, Plut.
Just before you run home, has there been any discussions or?
We're adjourned. I mean, you can talk, but we're, we're done, yeah. All right, planning and zoning, we're staying late. Keith, go ahead.
There's no light. Has there been any discussions, future plans, as briefly mentioned, and had about a hospital or medical center coming in? I had unfortunate situation this, this last Saturday, it wasn't very impressive with our ER, ER system, so that's why I was, expressed some interest.
We are wooing, we are wooing, we are wooing.
What does that mean?
Recording, recording.
Are you, are you just fishing? Are you getting any nibbles?
Takes a long time to get married sometimes.
You're getting nibbles?
Adjourn.
Are we talking about an actual hospital? Are we talking like a surgical center or whatever floats?
Planning and zoning, we'd like to adjourn, adjourn, all in favor.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All pose.